Order and rights for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the June 24 meeting of the County Commission. I remind you to silence your cell phones. Meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly in the black folder. And Robert is in the front row if you need a listening device. With that, we'll move on with the meeting.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with the change with number 10. I believe we don't have a quorum necessary for the drainage issue, so I'd ask that that be deferred until proper notice can be provided to all the parties.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with the deferment of item number 10 due to lack of a quorum. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two are to approve the County Commission minutes of June 17, 2014.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the minutes. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $576,386.74 plus election day expenses of $36,325.97.
I'll move the bills and the election expense.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments or additional questions?
How many people voted in that election?
About 15,000.
Two bucks a vote.
About.
Interesting.
Any other comments?
Just a moment. Am I wrong, Bob? It was about that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I didn't mean that as a criticism.
No.
I just found it interesting that we can only get 15,000 people to vote.
Item four, reports. The Minnehaw County Sheriff's Department report for May 2014 was received and placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Looking for a motion for routine action.
I'll make the motion for routine action.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the routine actions. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
There are no application for abatements today. The next item are notice and requests. A notice from the South Dakota Department of Transportation of a public meeting to be held at the Ramcoata Hotel, 3200 West Maple Street, Sioux Falls, at 7:00 PM on July 23, 2014, to receive public input on the tentative 2015-2018 four-year statewide transportation improvement program.
Comment on that at the regional meeting. Chris from the office up here stressed how important it is to get some people there. Because if we don't have anybody there, nobody, then they think nobody cares. Robert, maybe you want to expand on that a little.
Commissioner Kelly, I would just note that there are two different meetings that are involving the Department of Transportation. This is the STIP plan, the one that was discussed at the Southeast District meeting last week is the summer study public meeting series, talking about road and bridge conditions and funding around the state. That meeting is, there's a number of meetings around the state. The one in Sioux Falls, I believe, is July 1st, 4:00 to 6:00 PM out at Southeast Tech. And that, you are correct, that the association is highly recommending and urging local turnout for that meeting to oppress upon committee members the concerns and needs for...
Were you going to kind of get that information out to department heads also?
We certainly will do that. We have it on the public calendar already and...
It's our only opportunity to really give any input into the summer study. And I think that's a concern, is if only, you know, if we don't show up, then they don't think we have any interest.
And our highway department has already prepared some pretty extensive information about the condition of where we're at on our road and bridges, et cetera. And I believe you should have all received an email copy of that report that was prepared. And I believe the highway folks gave to the chairman of the committee.
Right. But if I may, Madam Chair, Minnehaw County in the last couple of years is, I would say, at the forefront of this wave of interest in maintaining their infrastructure and bridge repair. We are the ones that are actually taking the charge. So I think the state and the other counties are actually looking at us as the leader in this area. And I'm glad Shannon's here because their office has been championing this for the last couple of years. I will take notice, though, that this particular STIP is the, this came up at UDC, and we had a conversation about it there, where, you know, obviously, the Department of Transportation, they want to get public input. UDC was well informed as to this upcoming meeting. So, you know, they want our involvement into what is the goal of the state of South Dakota and working within the city and the other local municipalities, as well as the counties, to go ahead and to create what is going to be their wish list of doing fundamental repairs and maintenance. I think, you were there too? No, wait, Dick was there.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move on.
There are no planning and zoning notices, and there are no petition for compromise of lane today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anybody would like to speak of items that are not on the agenda. Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Heiberg, members of the commission, my purpose is also to reinforce the meeting next Tuesday. A week ago today, I was in peer for the committee's initial meeting on this summer study for highway financing, for highway needs and financing. I would encourage you to be there. I would encourage your department folks to be there. Senator Alley is leading this, is a longtime advocate of infrastructure needs in our state. And he is, I think, as interested as he can be in building a very big tent on this one and including the needs right down to township level, all the way up through the state's interstate system. And the format of the meeting, as I understand it, is going to be kind of an open-mic thing. They're going to go through a little bit of preliminary information, provide a little bit of background, and then ask for input. And I would encourage, as you prepare your input, what the senator has been asking for is to please come with both identified needs and proposed solutions. That's what they want to hear from you. Indeed deeply interested, so encourage broad support. And I'm hopeful some of the counties from around the area also will participate in the Sioux Falls event.
Mark, could you identify yourself in your position just for TV?
I'm sorry, Mark Lee with Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
Well, and I think Mark brings up an interesting point. We have, a transportation bill was passed. It's the most limited one in the history of the republic. I think it's 18 months, tops. And the transportation bill is so short, and there's been a concerted effort on the part of many eastern states to create new requirements regulatorily that will actually create small populated states like South Dakota, will be excluded from the formula. So we need to make every effort to try to find every single transportation issue and bring that to the forefront so that we can let the US Department of Transportation and our delegation know that we have needs here within the state of South Dakota. And it's not just greater Philadelphia, and it's not just Washington DC, and it's not just New York. And these major population areas that are going to be able to basically say, all the transportation dollars need to stay where the people are, not out in the hinterlands like South Dakota. And I think this does our yeoman's effort to try to get that message out.
Thanks, Mark. Any other public comment? I guess we'll move on.
Okay. Item 10 has been deferred until a voting quorum is present. So we'll move on to item 11 is consider a motion to restructure Minnehaw County Diversity Committee. Jen Addicks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jen Addicks from Human Resources. As you know, this morning, I wanted to talk to you briefly about restructuring the Minnehaw County Diversity Committee. This is a volunteer committee currently comprised of members from the community who advocate for people in protected groups, which include women, minorities, individuals with disabilities, and veterans. Additionally, Carrie Dever, the HR Director, and I serve on the board, and we also have a commission liaison. We've been very fortunate to have good committee members for the past several years. They've been dedicated. Our terms are limited to three years, and I know we have extended those for a couple of members in the past. But on the 30th of this month, their terms do expire. So Carrie and I sat down and we took a careful look at the committee, the diversity committee, and its true purpose. And we feel that we would like to restructure this committee to get back to what it was intended to do, which is to support diversity through monitoring our statistical reports, which are those reports that we bring to you every year, the affirmative action report, the Vets 100 report, and then every other year, the EEO4 report. And we feel that one of the ways that we could be best effective in impacting those reports is if we enlisted committee membership from middle and upper management here at county. Those are the people who obviously work very closely with employees, but they also work very closely with the public. And we feel that they would be not only knowledgeable about diversity issues that impact their departments, but also really well positioned to impact the critical decisions that affect our workforce through those efforts that we make in trying to ensure equal employment and affirmative action through our recruiting, our hiring, our training, and our promotion. Again, because the committee terms expired this month, we felt like this would be a good time to talk about restructuring the committee. And if you do approve that, we begin by assembling a staff committee, and they would continue to be involved in the affirmative action plan and all of those other reports. We would also make sure to keep them apprised of new or pending legislation that affect diversity issues at the county. And we feel, too, that they would be able to bring issues to us, diversity issues that impact their department and the people that their department serves. Additionally, we'd continue to be on the committee as well, the HR Director and I, and we'd continue to have an HR liaison through the commission as well. We'd look at meeting approximately twice per year or as additionally as needs arise. I know you've received a memo on this already. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jen? Okay. Any outside comments? If you want to just come up and identify yourself?
My name is Wes Garcia, and I've served on the diversity committee for the county for, since 1997, actually.
Wes, could you give your address, please?
It's 2212 South Sherman Avenue, here in Sioux Falls. And before I go into my, talk about the changes that the committee wants to take place, I just want to talk a little bit about myself so that you understand my background. I'm an instructor at one of the community colleges here. I teach diversity issues. I was the diversity coordinator at Dakota State University. Before I retired, I was co-founder of Diverse City, and I serve on the Board of Equality in South Dakota. So I am very active in the diversity issues in the area. And I'm opposed to the changes that HR wants to make in the diversity committee on the following grounds. Basically, for lack of a better word, the committee was set up to be a watchdog on the issues of EEO filings and things of that nature. And some of the examples that I can give you over the years, even before I became a member of the committee, was that it was voluntarily chosen that we would match, or try to match percentages within the employment structure of the county with the Census Bureau percentages. And we know that sometimes we can't do that, but it was our goal. So usually, we fell between what the census was saying and what were the minimum requirements. So we were doing better than what the federal government was asking us to do. Also, the committee would provide workshops on diversity issues for the county employees or recommend people who could run workshops for the county employees. And I think those are two very important issues that need to continue. The committee has a long history of being leaders in the area of diversity. And long before the sexual orientation was added to the federal guidelines of protected classes, Minnehaw County approved it. And one of the reasons that people were opposed to it back then, before it was approved, was that it would create a large number of legal lawsuits. It never did. And I've been champion, I guess, that we enlarge our rules, if you can put it that way, to include rules that are similar to what the Employment Nondiscrimination Act or ENDA would be doing for the GLBT community. And the regions have approved laws or regulations that are similar to ENDA, and they've had no problem with it. And yet, we're behind in reaching out to communities within our population to meet those needs. And again, one of the reasons that we stalled on it was that it might cause lawsuits. The regions have had no lawsuits in their new regulations, and I don't foresee any lawsuits if we were to approve ENDA-type regulations for county employees. So that's basically some of the reasons why I oppose it. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Garcia? None? Thank you for your comments. Are there any of anyone else that wants to speak on this subject? All right, I would look for comments. Carrie, sorry, Carrie.
I just want to clarify one issue in regard to the ENDA legislation. We have had our attorneys look at that provision to make sure that our current language does cover that. So regardless of terminology, we want everyone to be aware that our current policy does cover that, and certainly would protect anybody in that class.
Yeah, and just for clarification, I know that this has come up before. Now, my understanding is that our EEO policy does include protections for, I believe, orientation. But then, I don't believe the city of Sioux Falls, they do have any provision regarding orientation, or did they adopt it?
I'm not aware that they made a specific change.
I don't believe they did. No. I think we do, but they don't, so...
I mean, our policy is also very broad in that it says, and any other protected class, legally protected class.
Right.
I just wanted to clarify that one.
Yeah, well, sometimes people get confused when they think the city is the county and the county is the city. So I want to try to avoid any sort of confusion there, so...
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I've been serving on that committee for, what, the last two years, I guess. Jen goes through a lot of work, put it together and put all the stuff together. Generally, I, and I can't say specifically, other than staff and myself, there might have been one, maybe two people there. I really think that this thing that they proposed makes more sense, because I think the department heads, one would come. I didn't hear, were you talking about semi-annual meetings or, and there is, there's an opportunity there for input from the public. And I think it would just make a lot more sense, and we can look at what the original mission was, and that is to comply with, comply with the regulations. To get proactive on it, I think, is just going to demand more and more of our staff. I think there are facilities out in the community that can already take care of this situation. And I would strongly urge that we adopt what Jen and Carrie have provoked. And with that, unless John has any comments, I would make a motion to approve the request to restructure.
I'll second it, but I do want to have a comment.
Go ahead.
I really value Wes's comments and the fact that he came today. Every year, we go through our diversity committee, and we go through the presentations that are made. And without question, Wes Garcia is here. He takes time out of his day to come here, and I really value his comments that he brought here to the podium today. He's right. When this was originally created, this was designed to be a watchdog over the different departments to make sure we're in compliance. However, you know, quite frankly, it was an odd lot, because although the diversity committee sits in HR, quite honestly, we have to listen to our diversity committee, and then the commission has to go, listen to that recommendation, and then go to the department heads after receiving that recommendation, and encourage action, and ask that action be taken. Since I've been here, we've had presentations, and the information has been very helpful. We're always, if not in compliance, within the threshold of being in compliance. And so what I would say is that it's worked thus far. I'm going to support the motion because I value what Wes did say, but I want to make sure that our mid-level managers and our department heads are getting out from underneath what I will call the penumbra or the umbrella, the shield, that the commission gives them in regards to diversity. This is going to require them to sit at the table and be involved with diversity. At this point, it's something that the diversity council and HR, they're managing. They get the message from the commission. Now they're going to have to go, and they're going to have to inject themselves and be part of the process. It does hobble the effect of the diversity committee to be the watchdog, though. But that doesn't mean that we can't take action up here to create a different entity to go ahead and be that watchdog, a true watchdog, like what Wes originally described. And that's something that we can talk about later. But I think it's great that we're forcing, for lack of a better term, our department heads and our supervisors to go and sit in on those meetings. And I'm hoping that that's the takeaway that we're going to get today.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion and a second.
No.
Okay.
Just in regard, if I were being very honest, we have sometimes struggled with attendance from the community members, but I want to reiterate John's comments. Wes has been an outstanding member of the committee. Janelle Watkins, in fact, everybody has provided valuable input. So I just want to clarify that. Very glad to have all those important people working with us for these past few years.
And our meetings are still open.
It's less about the effectiveness of that group, more as in, if we're truly going to impact the hiring decisions that are being made here at county and the promotional decisions, the people who are making those decisions are the managers.
Have to be there.
And that's why we want to turn the focus to that group.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second to restructure the Minnehaw County Diversity Committee. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, for coming. You're still welcome at all of our meetings.
I'll be here.
Good. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Wes, I would love to sit down with you and talk about maybe creating a different group to go ahead and be the watchdog.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Wes.
Thank you, Wes.
Item 12, consider a motion to declare a surplus for sale of the following highway department items, and authorize the auditor to publish the notice of sale. Asset 18364, asset 61360, asset 61500, asset 63570, asset 60800, asset 71450, asset number 71400, and the following items with no asset numbers, two 1973 Ford tractors, serial numbers C-382204 and C-382307, and Clark forklift model C500Y60. Shannon Schultz?
Madam Chair and Commissioners, good morning. My name is Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. Before you today is the commission's request to declare a surplus, the items that Cindy had mentioned, and then for the auditor to publish the notice for sale. In your agenda package, you have a pretty good amount of detail. I have additional details should you wish to know more about those individual items. And without going into that, without being provoked, I will receive questions.
Questions for Shannon. I have a couple. I'm just looking at the 2015 list, Shannon, of stuff that we want to buy. One of them on here is a utility tractor, yet we're getting rid of two tractors. So why can't we use the tractors we have instead of spending another $40,000 on new tractors?
The old tractors have different hydraulic setups, and as we migrate towards more modern equipment, the amount of compatibility with older systems becomes limited. And so those things might be not used for a year at a time. And then when they need to be used, the attachments that have been used on other implements have to be retrofitted, and it's just time-consuming. You can see those items are quite old in terms of horsepower and torque. And frankly, the hydraulic power, a lot of our attachments are hydraulically driven, and they don't have a hydraulic capacity to drive some of our additional implements that we use on a routine basis.
I'm also wondering about getting rid of these two snowplows. I mean, it doesn't look like there's really anything wrong with either of these snowplows. So why are we getting rid of the snowplows and then buying two new tandem trucks?
It's a good question, Cindy. They're unsafe to operate because there's no mechanical assist in the cab. Modern equipment has hydraulics helping do the heavy levers and moving. These don't have that. And so we frankly only have three people who have any experience in these units because they're used so little. They're only used in an emergency. And when I bring people out of the department, and I say, if you see these on the road, you shouldn't be out, because they're only out in an emergency. So because one of the three people who can operate these is a supervisor now, he doesn't drive them anymore, that really just leaves two people. And we're gravitating towards the six-by-six plows to take these place, place of these in emergencies. So they're just old irons sitting around. With the modern plows, they're just not getting used.
Okay, now I'm going to check, I'm going to pick on the forklift, because we have a forklift that you were going to put in here. And questions on the forklift, because we also, I think, are buying a new forklift. The forklift on your guys' junk list needs repairs to $4,000.
Correct.
The brand-new forklift is $25,000.
That's correct.
So why not fix the one we have?
From what I understand, we're looking for a replacement that is either new or used, so it's not necessarily going to be a new one. But it's in need of $4,000 repairs. That's all the information I have from our maintenance department.
I think I have another one. Skid steer. We're also getting rid of a Bobcat.
Bobcat.
And I'm wondering about the Bobcat issue and the skid steer issue, because a skid steer is $50,000.
Yes, there's hydraulic problems with that. It's been disassembled twice to try and track this. It leaks oil. The engine has been gone through twice, like I said. The replacement is purchased and is in use currently. We offered this up to Lloyd, and he said, no, thank you. And I'll just add that that item is 15 years old, and our skid steers do get used quite a bit. So there's a lot of hours on that skid steer.
Any other questions or comments?
Is a skid steer the same as the Bobcat, is it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
And then I see that there was also some pickups on here that were, one of them...
2003.
Yeah, was it 2003 that didn't have really any issues? It was just, didn't need it?
The Dodge asset, or unit number 0311, it is over the $150,000 replacement policy number. It is also over the six-year age in policy replacement. And very small minor things, it needs a hydraulic, or excuse me, a catalytic converter. And so that's why that's on, it has to be phased out. The second pickup is a Dodge, or excuse me, a Chevy, unit 0312. There's an interesting history with this little pickup. We know it's in good shape. This pickup has been assigned to our summer interns. Our summer interns are really hard on our equipment, and rather than have them sort of drive this nice pickup into the ground, we're giving them an older Dodge pickup with a lot more miles, and we're just going to run that till the wheels fall off, and that the interns kind of, I guess, use that up, and then get some salvage value out of this Silverado here. It is exceeding the six-year replacement policy. It's 11 years old and has just under 130,000 miles on it. We request, or we talked emergency management, planning, the assessor's office, as well as Lloyd and facilities, and neither of them wanted the transfer of title.
I just, I have a little bit of a problem with, we put this new replacement policy in order to have something to go by, so that there's a standard. But that doesn't mean just because we have a pickup and it's six years old, you throw it out the door. Or just because it hits $150,000, you throw it out the door. There's nothing wrong with that. You guys have two new pickups, three new pickups on for 2015, and we have two here that there doesn't seem to be a tremendous amount wrong with it. Needs a new catalytic converter.
Sell my car when the catalytic converter goes out.
I've got over 200,000 miles on one vehicle and 100,000 on the other vehicle, and I don't plan on getting rid of either of them.
Okay. One small, not extreme.
Yeah, go ahead. It's not fair you get picked on, because...
Well, that's fine. Another thing we're trying to do in our department is, is we're keeping the quad cabs, place for four adults, basically, because we're finding if you have to send two people out, they take nine vehicles. These extended cabs, they take two people. So we're trying to minimize the number of, you know, vehicles out on site when they have to mobilize. And that's the other little small background why the Chevy makes sense to not use right now.
Commission, any more questions?
Well, I'm receptive, because I remember when we were buying the paver, this would have been three or four years... would have been three or four years ago, that we really needed at that point to have a policy for replacement for the equipment. Because when we went out there and we reviewed some of the equipment, the equipment really needed to get on a rotation schedule. Then we had the huge drop in water levels in Minnehaw County. We did some bridge review and we found it out, obviously, we needed to address some of our bridges immediately. So that actually put this a little bit back. But once again, we do need to get in the process of replacing that equipment out there. Now be mindful, though, when you put your equipment out for bid, you know, remember, when the money comes in from the sale of those vehicles, whether or not it goes back into highway funds, it can go back into general funds as well. You need to go in with your eyes wide open.
I think that's true, Mr. Beckus, and I think it's switched. Sometimes it goes to highway funds, sometimes it goes to general funds, so...
That's right. It's up to our decision on whether or not it gets into your fund or back into the general fund, so, highway fund. So just be mindful of that. But I'll support it, but I do, I do think that the chairwoman has a valid point in regards to unit 311 and unit 312. Those aren't very old. I don't know if I'm going to get a second on it.
Did you make a motion?
Oh, I'll make, I'll make the motion. I don't know if we'll get a second.
Are you going to put money in the general fund?
We can't, we can't do that. No, we can't, we can't do it yet.
What?
Motion before, the request before you, if you have a notice of sale, as in your...
That's it.
Is to have all of the items that have been listed on the notice of sale to be sold on IronPlanet.
Right, that's it.
Which is an auction website, is basically what it is. So, and that notice of sale has all of these items listed on it for the sale. So if you, I believe your motion is to approve that particular notice...
That's it.
With all those things on it at this juncture, but I haven't heard a second of that yet. But that's your motion.
But when the proceeds come in, that's when the...
When the proceeds come in and once we know what that is...
That's when we make that decision.
Right. Once we know what the proceeds are, then you will bring, the auditor's office will float a motion to you to decide and to designate where those proceeds go, once we know those dollar amounts.
Well, I have a question. Why could we not make the motion and direct that the proceeds will be sent to the general fund? Now, I mean, a lot of time passes between now and the time we get the money. I don't know why we couldn't make that statement upfront that this money will go back into the general fund.
I mean, I don't see...
I question, you know, 128,000 miles on a pickup that's had mechanics looking at it constantly because you've got, what, two on staff? That, I mean, these cars get maintained better than a car, an individual, most often, and certainly better than mine, it's got 150,000 miles on it. So that's my question, is why, why we can't do the intent of the...
You know, I don't believe that there would be anything that would prohibit you from doing that. I mean, past practice has been, you know, once we know the specific dollar amount, because I think we do need that specific dollar amount to say, this dollar amount will be transferred to that. I mean, so that you have that official record that on this action, here is the specific amount. And it just brings clarity to the process because you also have the ability to split those up, you know? And so our past practice has always been that once we know the exact dollar amounts for purposes of transparency, for purposes of tracking the item, that that's the way we've always done that, I think, to meet the intent of the law. And that, though, I don't see anything specifically that says you can't do it that way, but I would strongly recommend that we continue with that practice and that, so...
We have a motion on the table with no second at this point to consider surplus, declare surplus of list of items. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
I want to float a motion to approve the transfer of these to the list and to place those funds in the general fund when they come in.
Could you repeat that, Dick? I didn't, to declare a surplus?
Surplus.
And put proceeds into the general fund. Is there a second?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
It's more than I did.
Yeah.
I have a motion and a second for the purpose of discussion.
I'm just not, I know we want to have a good fleet over there, and I know we want to have good equipment, but we're also in a situation where we haven't got all the money in the world. And there's already some dispute as to whether we're talking two or $3 million on a reserve balance for the, you know, for the highway because the possibility of, you know, losing a bridge like Baltic in a hurry. I think we need to be prepared for that and don't want to have to opt out or go to general fund, fund money for fixing a bridge when, right now, we can operate the whole thing within its own funds. I, I guess it's a, it's a policy difference maybe that I have with the highway, but you see a lot of places out there running some pretty old equipment that can still be, those pickups look nice, both of them. And, you know, from a cosmetic standpoint, there's nothing wrong. And other than transmissions, I don't know what kind of trouble you get into until you get to 175 or 200,000 miles. Some of them, the Bobcat, you've already replaced. But I agree with Cindy on the tractors, you know, how much they're used, what they're used for. Some of this stuff, I would gather, is probably backup. You always need something in an emergency and you've got a piece of equipment that's not worth much and doesn't work very good, but if you need to, if you need to have something in an emergency, you've got it there. That's kind of my logic on the thing. And as far as I'm concerned, I, I think that money, I'd rather see that money go into the general fund at this point. I realize it's a change in past policies, but the whole vehicle deal is a change in past policies and I think needs a lot more tweaking. I think all we really set up was some standards, and highway was kind of outside of them in a way. But I think there ought to be a review of, there ought to be a non-departmental review of any departments, whether it's equalization highways or looking at the equipment. And it's a longer process, but we've got a lot of time. I mean, we, we're planning out 15 and looking at long-range plans on large purchases, so...
Shannon, just go ahead.
For discussion purposes, another, we rented some space over the winter and we have a fixed amount of space at our facility and we want to get those winter operation maintenance, that majority of equipment, we want to have onsite, under a roof. And so, you know, getting rid of some of this equipment that's antiquated helps us either rent less space or rent no space. Secondly, for your consideration, if you wish to do a line item detail rather than throughout the whole sale as listed here, if you want to just keep those two pickups, I think that would be amenable to us rather than not be able to auction any of this off.
Well, at this point, the motion is to auction it off. We're auctioning it off, but the proceeds will go into general fund. But, you know, the reality is that once that money does come in, it's subject to having another motion made. And remember, we have two commissioners that aren't here today, so I'm sure this will come back up once you actually make the sale at IronPlanet.
Christian has a comment, and so do I.
Yeah, I just, I just want to clarify, the prior motion that died for a lack of a second, if passed, would not preclude putting the money eventually into the general fund. I believe it's an accounting issue, and I urge you to be cautious about that because generally, no pun intended, the general fund and the highway fund exist separately and there's a very clear division. When we cross that line, and we are able to in this case, I just want there to be a clear accounting of where those proceeds came from and why they're being transferred, if they ultimately are transferred between the funds.
Right.
That being said, there's nothing defective with the current motion, it's just, it's split out for that reason, usually, so...
I will not be supporting the motion for two reasons. One, because it's an accounting issue and I think we need to know the amount of money, excuse me, that's going into the general fund before we, before we put it there. And I also think it's only fair that all five commissioners, if they're here, can have a voice in that. I also am not going to support it because I don't, the first one died for a lack of a second, and I think that's where it needs to stay. I don't think we are ready to be surplusing all this property when we haven't even finished our budget cycle. Those two pickups have been turned down by other department heads, but when they don't get the vehicles they're asking, they may be looking for anything. I think that there's a whole lot more discussion that needs to go into this, and I think three of us making the decision is the wrong way to go. So I will not be supporting the current motion on the table. Any other comments?
Well, and if I may finish, I do think that it's important to remember that we are in the middle of this budget cycle, and unfortunately, the highway department's motion intersects with a $6 million budget deficit that we have right now in the budget process that we have. And we're trying to find $6 million, and quite frankly, we don't have it. I checked the mattress out back, the money isn't in there. So we've been stocking that money in the old mattress and it's just not there. So with that being said, I do think that the timeliness of this particular motion probably should come back before the full commission. And I also think that with those proceeds, depending on where we're at in our budget process, it might have to go into general fund this year because I don't know where we're going to be picking up that extra money, if not slashing budgets right and left. So in the here and now, I won't be supporting the motion either. I did second it for purposes of discussion.
Commissioner Kelly?
Do I understand if, if we defeat the motion, it automatically comes back next week?
No. But we can bring it back later.
It's on a tie.
On a tie, it would come back next week, but there's not going to be a tie when we have three people.
Nope, it'll fail. And then they can ask to come back later when...
I'm going to withdraw the motion.
All right, I'll second.
We have a motion to withdraw the previous motion, and we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes to...
Withdraw.
Withdraw. So we are back to the original.
No, I just withdrew it, you don't need that.
Okay, okay.
That's okay, it's gone.
So we are back to the original, it's, nothing's happening, Shannon.
No, the other never got a second, so we have no motion.
Right, there's no motion. Nothing's happening.
Which means we can hold off until the budget.
You briefed us.
I'll make a motion to defer this until all five commissioners can hear it.
Is there a second?
That would mean it comes back in the next week or two.
Will do confirm.
I think Cindy, I think your comment was that we need to look at...
The budget.
At the budget first. And so I'm not going to second it because it then leaves the discretion of the chairman that's headed on the, on the agenda.
You can always put it on another agenda in the future, too.
That's right. We can always put it on the agenda.
So we'll see you again probably with a similar agenda item. Just a small point of order is that we used trade-in values, which are traditionally low. IronPlanet, we're going to get probably 20%, up to, up 15% to 20% more from IronPlanet when the day comes, so, thank you.
We had a motion on the table that died for a lack of a second. Now I think we're done. Okay, we can move on. Thanks, Shannon.
The next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports?
Well, I attended the Southeast District along with Robert and I believe Kyle, Kyle and Julie and Pam. Anyway, it was, the commission part of it was rather typical, other than what Chris stressed on being at the, at the summer study meeting. Nothing else, it was kind of a bitch session and that was about it. Nothing, nothing really rose to the top to get anything done. I think everybody's got their problems, nobody wants to solve them. So, oh, but I did, they needed another member on the Resolutions Committee. And so, and so I volunteered, and it was kind of intentional to take one for the group, but I still think we need to be represented on that Resolutions Committee, we haven't been for years. They asked for an alternate, which I think they only meet twice, if I'm correct, but they asked for an alternate, and I offered up our chairman's name, and that was accepted. So I forgot to tell you.
Okay, that's fine, I already heard, I already heard.
Yeah, typically, the Resolutions Committee will meet as an organization towards the end of August and that to review the resolutions that have been submitted and that for consideration. And they vet those as far as what they will present towards, at convention, and then they meet one more time during the convention itself as a final reading and more or less a final vetting before those go to the membership for votes.
I don't know how big that committee is. Is it five or...
It, I have to look, I think there's, I think there's eight.
Eight?
There's, there's one representative from each district of commissioners and that sits on that committee. And so I have to look at that number again, Dick.
Well, I, you know, we need to be thinking about any resolutions we want to bring in. I think now at least it gives us a voice at the table. We haven't been real successful pleading our case all the time before, so now we at least have somebody at the table. So I would look forward and I will assure you that I will do my absolute utmost to get to that meeting, but if not...
All right. Any other liaison reports? I just want to comment, I don't know that Commissioner Kelly had heard that the Security Board at the JDC had had some issues over the weekend, and we did fly in somebody from Atlanta. They repaired themselves before the guy got here, but we are checking to find out if there are any other long-term problems going on with the Security Board at the JDC. So it's up and working and it's fine, and we'll have a report from them later.
No, it's probably something we should talk, you said the end of August, Ken? So it's something I think we should begin talking about, is anything that we're going to want to bring to the SDACC.
Okay. All right. Any other reports? I think so. Is there any new business? Any old business? None? I'd look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and contract negotiations.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.
And only one thing to sign today.